Call the meeting to order, seven oh seven. Welcome everybody to this December meeting of the Altadena Town Council. Item one point one is the call to order and the introduction. So as I said, I just wanted to welcome everybody to this holiday season of two thousand and twenty-one and all the good it brings for everybody. So, uh, uh, welcome. And I'm going to move on to item one point two, roll call, council member one.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So let's get our roll call rolling. Councilmember Knapp.
Present.
Councilmember Lyford.
Here.
Councilmember Malone.
Present.
Councilmember Arndsen.
Present.
Councilmember Wong is here. Councilmember Petrie.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember O'Malley. Councilmember Jones. Do I hear her? I see Veronica. Do I hear her?
You're muted, Veronica.
Muted.
Here, sorry, here.
Thank you. Councilmember Aranda.
Hello.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Peck.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Hello, hello. Councilmember Cauliflower.
Here.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Marcusson.
Here.
Looks like everybody's here. We have a quorum sixteen.
Thank you. Moving on, item one point three, approval of December twenty first, two thousand and twenty-one agenda. Uh, councilmember Jones.
Good evening again, council. I, uh, everyone received the agenda and I hope everyone looked it over. And does anybody have any changes that they would like to make to the agenda? I have a change I'd like to make. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting in honor of Dolores Hickambottom. I'd like to respectfully request that after the business of the evening has concluded, that we adjourn in her honor with a short moment of silence.
I second.
Any?
All those in favor say aye to the change.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So you moved unanimous.
Okay, so we accept the, uh, agenda with that one change.
Correct. Okay, uh, moving on, item two, officers' report. Um, starting with myself, two point one. Um, first, I want to say, uh, I want to welcome Supervisor Bagger, who I see is in the room, for coming personally to our end of the year and to the swearing-in ceremony for the new elected, uh, representatives. So thank you so much for taking the time and coming. We really, really appreciate it. Um, I, this is also too, I wanted to let everybody know as my chairman's report, um, this is sort of a little bit of sweet. I joined the count, this is my last, uh, my last, uh, meeting as chair. And as I didn't run this time, I won't be reseated, um, at this meeting. Um, so, uh, I just want to say that, uh, it's been a long journey and it's been a fruitful one. I think it was around two thousand and thirteen when I started on the council. I started not knowing too much about the council, but I was, uh, very humbled when I was involved in a, a legal issue, uh, in the courts, um, when I was helping somebody and I saw that a decision was made when nothing was read. And I was so disappointed that, um, in the system where people could make decisions without reading, um, without reading the information that was given to them. So I decided that I was going to get involved in whatever level that was, whatever small amount it was, whatever large amount, whatever I could, because I felt like if I got involved, I would read the information and make decisions based on the information that was presented. Um, so I've tried to do that. I've had a great, a great run. It, it, it's, uh, I've been here in the community and active. I'm not going away. I will always be here for everybody. Um, I'm always reachable, approachable, um, always happy to help. I've always said that, uh, if you ever want to know how involved, how involved someone's going to be and how dedicated they are, ask them what they're going to do when they don't get something, rather than when they do, uh, you will see I will not be going away. Um, I, uh, I'm very proud of some of the things we've achieved on the council, especially for, uh, acknowledging, um, um, recent, in the last year, with the, uh, letter we sent out for the council, um, our stand on, uh, uh, social injustice. Um, when the pandemic hit, we're the first council on, in Altadena, um, the sitting council that had to deal with a pandemic. And I don't know if you all remember, but that time LA Times put out an article saying how all town councils are shut down and nobody had representation and how they could reach people. We were the only council that didn't miss that. It was rocky at first, but we actually went through. And we can say that we, I believe we were the only council, the first council, to be up and running and actually be available to our constituents and our community. Uh, we never missed a beat again. It was rocky, but we made it through and we had our live meetings and we were able to do that. Um, I remember we saved our station. Um, there was a big, we all, we all supported that, doing what we could, writing letters, supporting it, leading that charge since I've been chair. Uh, when we had the Bobcat Fire, all the cap, council members volunteered and we went down and, and got on the phones at the, um, at the fire, uh, LA County Fire and myself included and was answering calls to help support people. Uh, like I say, I, from ribbon cuttings to presentations, awards, events, it's been a wonderful ride in the community. So I just want to say, this is a big thank you from me, that the community has given me this opportunity to be here and represent. So, thank you all, um, and thank you for the time and, and thank you for giving me those opportunities and, and I'm still here. So, I just wanted to say that, thank you from me.
Thanks, Billy.
Okay, moving on, item two point two, Vice Chair, Councilmember Jones.
And I just want to say, Billy, thank you for your leadership and for those times when I didn't know what to do and I called you, uh, frustrated and upset. Saying, what do I do? And you gave me an answer. So I want to thank you for that. So, and just because you're not the chair doesn't mean that I won't be calling on you. I'll still be calling on you. So thank you. But I wanted to say tonight, our community has lost a great warrior. Her name was Dolores Hickambottom. I want to honor the memory of Mrs. Dolores Hickambottom tonight. Mrs. Hickambottom served our country in World War Two and came back to the Altadena community to be a champion of women's rights and civil rights for all. She dedicated her life to advocate for equality in social, political, and educational opportunities to be made available to all. She didn't mind getting into good trouble. She guided our community to do the right thing with dignity, respect, and integrity. She fought for equal opportunities for all, right here in our community, alongside her husband, Ebby, Ebby Hickambottom Senior. The landmark case Pasadena City Board of Education versus Spangler happened because of the good trouble that she and her husband stirred up. This landmark case helped to integrate the P, the PUSD school system and make it what it is today. Her work encouraged this community to do the right thing. We honor not only a neighbor, but a woman who was a resource to our community for some of our most pressing issues. Her legacy is one of quiet greatness. Her work is forever entrenched in our community. I want to thank her family for sharing her with us. Thank you. That's, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, moving on, item two point three, Councilmember Marcusson, recording secretary in, in the interim. You are muted right now.
Yes, I sent out the minutes last week, um, and I did not hear back from anyone, so I'm assuming.
Motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? So moved unanimous. Okay, moving on, item two point four, Treasurer's Report. Councilmember Marcusson, welcome back.
Yes, I'm giving my year-end report. Uh, as of January first, two thousand and twenty-one, our bank balance was two thousand, three hundred, twenty-seven dollars even. As of November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, which is our last bank statement, um, the balance is, uh, one thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and two cents, which includes, as always, a, a charge for nine dollars, ninety-nine cents for the website. Um, since that date, when our statement cut off, I deposited four hundred and twenty dollars from election, uh, from the election, which brings our balance to two thousand, one hundred, sixty dollars and two cents. There are reimbursements outstanding for election expenses for which I've not received receipts, so those are still outstanding to pay. That is the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item two point five, corresponding secretary, Councilmember Wong.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. So since, uh, we are, uh, compiling information to, uh, quickly and get to the end of our meeting, I'm going to just make some special announcements, combining things. So on our community calendar page of our, uh, Altadena Town Council website, you can see I have updated everything through January. Um, the Altadena Farmers Market, uh, is going to be open, uh, tomorrow and they're going to be doing a special artisan pop-up. Uh, so I've linked that in there, so check that out. And then they'll be doing online ordering, um, on twelve twenty-nine. Then, once we get into January, um, Christmas Tree Lane, by the way, is operating, uh, I think until January the ninth, they'll be shutting the lights off. Um, so check out Christmas Tree Lane. I think it's, uh, five thirty, they're lights out, five thirty until midnight, until January ninth. Uh, drive carefully, respect all traffic laws and signs. Um, also, two days ago, by the way, it's winter solstice today, so happy winter. Um, Metro Los Angeles also changed the Next Gen Bus. So, uh, Sunday, the bus two sixty that we've known for many, many years is now called six sixty Next Gen and it travels between, um, Altadena and Pasadena. So I'll put the links up there. Um, so again, two sixty, uh, is now going to be shortened, called six sixty. Six sixty will operate, uh, between the Gold Line or the L Line, Delmar Station and Fair Oaks. Loma Alta, late night, will operate via Fair Oaks between Woodbury and Huntington Drive. So anyway, I'll have those links up. And also, uh, Metro Micro has been the most popular. I think Altadena, uh, Sierra Madre, Pasadena, uh, Metro Micro has been the most popular line. So they have just changed, I think, a week ago. They are now expanding hours, Monday through Sunday, five thirty AM, uh, to ten PM. And they are offering a lot of incentives right now. It's still, I think, a dollar a ride. So I'll put that information up. I also put up some information on, um, COVID nineteen, um, prevention. So there's some really great information from LA County Public Health that you can check out on our website. And then, since we're not doing our, um, parks report, uh, Sam just let me know to remind everybody that the gym will be open, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturdays. And I'll post the hours, four thirty, this is the Loma Alta Park Gym, uh, Monday, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday. And then youth basketball will be going on Monday through Friday, five thirty PM to seven PM, and then Saturday, ten AM to eleven AM. Uh, first to third youth, youth baseball clinics are Monday through Thursday, five thirty to eight. And there'll be a variety of classes for baking, frosting, urban-style ballroom, uh, arts and culture, uh, jump rope class. It sounds like fun. Tiny Tots is, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Um, and tennis class is going on, so I'll post those updates. And last but not least, on January the twenty-fifth, uh, the Greater LA Homeless Count, uh, will be happening and Altadena will be hosting, uh, fifty spots. Right now, we're at twenty spots. Uh, so Pablo let me know, um, twenty people are registered and we're aiming for fifty. So we are taking volunteers and I'll put some information up, uh, so that you guys can sign up. So again, uh, the Greater LA Homeless Count in Altadena will be January twenty-fifth, starting at eight PM. And, uh, I will populate a page on the website that has all of the great details, uh, and to get people to sign up. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to go on to item three. And, uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, Los Angeles County Fifth District Supervisor, Catherine Bagger. And, uh, welcome Catherine and, uh, and all the new, uh, representatives. And, uh, I'll let you take over.
Well, first of all, Billy, I want to thank you for your service. Um, I got to know you when we both were running for supervisor and I have to say, you are an amazing man. I love the fact that you put family first and are able to balance your family with truly your community, because I think you view the community as an extension of your family. And it's shown through and through. And I am so grateful, not only for your leadership on the town council for the last few years as a chair, but also just across the board. So thank you, Billy, um, for everything you've done. So I just, and I think we've sent you a squirrel, correct?
You did. So thank, thank you very much. And, and I just want to say, I also hold, I, I treasure your friendship and everything that you've done, so, thank you.
Yep, yep. Yep, and, and so, and then I just have to say, Dolores, um, what a treasure. Um, my heart, my heart breaks. Um, our board, and I'm sure it will be unanimous, will adjourn in her memory at our next board meeting. But this is a woman who truly, um, was a trailblazer and she's left a legacy. Um, the Hickambottoms are still alive and well in the area and, um, there are many more great things that are going to come as a result of her legacy. She and her husband truly were, um, amazing, uh, individuals in the community and it is a huge loss and my heart is breaking. So I really want to thank you for the, the comments that you made and we will adjourn in her memory as well. But my thoughts and prayers go to her family during this difficult time. So with that, you know, when I look at this town council, you know, I tell people the thing that I love about Altadena is that it truly is about diversity. It's about embracing, um, people's diversity and, and using it to really show what a community can be about. And when I look at this town council, that's exactly what I see. You all are the heartbeat of Altadena. And I treasure the input that you give. We've got some issues coming before us, whether it be the development that's going to be taking place as a result of some of the state changes. Um, but really, it's about keeping the community as, for lack of a better term, as, as it should be. And that is a community that really is about, um, embracing, um, the amazing things that come. I mean, you can go up Lake Avenue and see amazing little shops, mom and pop shops. You can walk around the community and see homes that have been, um, forever in the community. And I want to keep that in Altadena. I think it's important for us to look at what Altadena is and respect the Community Standards District. And I pledge to you that we will work together to make sure that happens. But I'm not here today to, to preach about the Community Standards District. I'm here to install, uh, the new incoming council members. And I just, um, what an honor it is for me to do that. I'm going to be installing Madeline Barber, Veronica Jones, Victoria Knapp, Sandra Thomas, my sister from another mother, Sylvia Vega, Reggie Wilkins, and Dorothy Wong. So with that, I'm going to ask you all to raise your right hand and respond by saying aye do, once I say what I'm going to say. And that is, do you accept the position bestowed upon you by the voters of Altadena and pledge to faithfully execute all duties and responsibilities bestowed upon you on behalf of the community?
I do.
I do. Do you pledge to uphold the Altadena Town Council's bylaws and ethical standards during your term in office?
I do.
Well, then let's roll up our sleeves and get to work. Congratulations to you all. We have a lot of work ahead of us, but I am confident with this town council. We are going to represent the people of Altadena in a way that will make them proud. So congratulations to each and every one of you.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my little sister.
Congratulations to you all. And thank you for serving. You get paid a lot of money to do this.
Yeah, we're, we're.
We have a raise. We have a raise. I just want to invite Catherine, I would just like to invite you to, I know that the, the meeting's moving fast, but I think you would like to, to hear our happy holidays. If you could hang around or if Suzie could hang around, it's worth it.
Okay, yeah, I had to switch from my iPad to my iPhone. Um, I literally drove from the board, I was down, we had board meeting today, which was long as you can imagine. But, but I, but I'll, I'll put it on mute and I'll walk around my house. So if you don't mind seeing a dog, a cat, a bird, um, rugs and all, I'm, I'm, I get a break. Yeah, well, it came with the marriage. Now, I'll leave, I'll leave this at that. I'll leave. Thank you for coming.
Love you.
Thank you.
Love you. But I'll keep it on, I'll keep it on and I'll, I'll turn off my camera, but I, I will listen, okay?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the time and thank you for coming so much. Okay, um, well, welcome all new council members. We will be going to the, the slate shortly, um, uh, for the executive. So I will be chairing until that particular moment. Um, so we're going to go on to item four, which is public safety reports. Um, and, uh, all new members, uh, welcome to the new council. So item four point one, California Highway Patrol and Officer Boyd, is he here? Is there another representative from, uh, CHP? Okay, if not, I'm going to move on. I do realize it is a difficult, this particular time, um, which is item four point two, the Altadena Sheriff's Station. We have Captain Williams. Yes, there we are. Welcome, Captain.
Hello, everybody. How you guys doing?
Hi.
Thank, thanks for having me here, uh, I appreciate it. It's my pleasure to be here right now. I just want to start with, uh, a few, uh, stats, crime stats from last month, November. Uh, crime in general, overall, in Altadena is actually down twenty-five percent when compared to last, uh, year, November. And vehicle thefts, uh, property crimes, especially with vehicle thefts, uh, is actually down fifty-one percent compared to last year, uh, November. Um, now, when comparing crime stats to last month, it's a little bit up. In October, we had forty-three crime incidents. And then in November, it went up to about forty-five, so one of two. Um, however, our property crimes compared to last month is actually down. And, uh, October, we had thirty-four property crime incidents. And for November, it went down to twenty-nine. So that is an improvement. So we hope to continue with that improvement moving forward. This is a time of year, November, December, when, uh, property crimes do go up because, uh, people are breaking into people's, uh, vehicles, stealing, uh, valuables, things of that nature. So, that being said, I'd like to talk about an event that hopefully will occur next month. Uh, we're planning a catalytic converter etching event. Hopefully, if everything goes right, as far as logistics and personnel, equipment, and actually finding a good location, we hope to have it on January twenty-second. If that doesn't occur, then maybe, if we don't get everything in order, perhaps we can have it early February. But I'm shooting for, uh, January twenty-second and I will certainly get that information out to you guys as soon as possible. Um, and the last thing I want to talk about is, uh, Supervisor Bagger, she's always shown a lot of support for Altadena, uh, her and her staff. And she continued with it by providing some funding, uh, for law enforcement within the community. And Altadena, and Altadena got its fair share. So over the next few, uh, weeks, possibly till January ninth, will be extra patrols in the areas just to deal with certain problem areas and hopefully to protect businesses from those type of, uh, incidents that were occurring, the smash and grab or grab and go. Uh, we haven't seen too much in Altadena. The closest we saw was in Pasadena, right on Lake Pass, Washington. There was a smash and grab incident. But we're hoping to keep it that way with the extra enforcement that we have. So I personally like to thank, uh, Supervisor Bagger and her staff for that. Uh, other than that, uh, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Any questions for the captain? Any questions from the council? Okay, uh, thank you very much, Captain Williams, and, uh, we really appreciate everything you're doing. Um, just to quick.
Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a happy, safe, uh, holidays.
Thank you. Um, can I ask, did, how did, didn't, didn't the station do a toy drive? And, and if so, how did that go?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, didn't the station do a toy drive? And if so, how did that go?
Yes, we, uh, we did a few toy drives. We did one just this Saturday, it went, uh, very well, um, at the community center. We kind of, uh, helped out with that. And then there's a few other toy drives that are occurring, I believe, this week. And then, in total, for the Sheriff's Department, it was a really big one. So it all worked out pretty great. So we'd like to thank the community for giving the toys, uh, that they did. Uh, it, it went to the community and it all worked out great. Thank you.
Because you guys put the effort in and because you do that and because that's community engagement, I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that and the work that you do towards that for our community at this time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Billy? I'd like to tell, um, Captain Williams, I wanted to thank you on Saturday. I pulled one of your officers and had him give a lady a ride home. She was on a bus with a box of toys that she was going to try and take on the bus home to her kids. And he graciously took her home, so.
Yes, yeah, no problem, anytime.
Uh, that, that's the sort of stories we love to hear, so, thank you. Um, moving on, item four point three, the LA County Fire, uh, Altadena, Maria Graykin.
Excuse me, hello, everybody. Um, for the month of November, uh, we had a total of two hundred and seventy responses in Altadena. Uh, two hundred and thirty-five of them were for medical calls and we did have one hundred and eighty-six patients transported, uh, from those calls with three fires during the month. Two of them were vehicle fires. Uh, and the third fire on November twenty-fourth on El Molino Avenue was a storage shed in the rear of a two-story apartment building. Um, it was probably an electrical malfunction that caused that fire. Uh, but there was a smell of gasoline and melted gas containers in that shed. So the firefighters did, um, turn it over to the sheriff's arson unit to investigate. Uh, so the, the losses from that particular fire were about ninety thousand dollars. Uh, we had a couple of instances of power lines down and one wires down. And then there were six traffic collisions during the month of, uh, November, which is pretty low for you guys. It's pretty low for Altadena. Um, that is it for the report, uh, unless anybody has any questions. And then I also just wanted to acknowledge, uh, for you all, um, that one of your battalion chiefs, Christian Litz, is also, um, in this meeting tonight. If he wants to just give a quick hello and I just wanted you all to meet one of your battalion chiefs.
Uh, hello, good evening. Uh, I have met several of you guys over the past years that I've been here, but I appreciate everything Altadena does for the, uh, county of Los Angeles and, uh, we're, we're happy to serve you and, uh, looking forward to serve you for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, and your service is much appreciated and, and thank you from all of the community and all of us. Okay, I'm going to move on to item five, special presentations. Um, this is where, this is typically when we have a live meeting, this is the meeting, that it's not about the council, this is the meeting where we, it's, it's about the community. And typically, this would be, we just do a couple of things at the beginning and then it's all over to the community and, and, uh, that's the main focus. Well, we can't do the potlucks and we can't have the community gatherings in an inside room. Or we can't have the school choir singing out loud in front of us. So, uh, we, we are going to be doing a little bit of presentation later and we also are going to, right now, each, each census tract will be representing, um, presenting, um, one, uh, hero from their, from their census tract. Um, each, each presentation. Um, ea- each presentation or each, uh, each shout out to, uh, census tract heroes is a two-minute presentation. So I do ask the, our council members to keep it within two minutes. It will be timed by Chris. I'm sorry that we're timing it, and it is, it is short, but remember, all the, uh, Oscar winners are also timed because everything's on a schedule. So, um, I'm gonna pass it over, and I'm gonna do it in order of census tracts, uh, by number as they're listed. So this, uh, to keep it as equitable as possible. So starting with forty, four, six, oh, one, I'm gonna pass it over to you guys, and then, um, make your presentation.
Thank you, Billy. Um, I'll be making the presentation on behalf of, uh, myself and, uh, Councilmember Knapp. Um, we'd like to honor tonight our neighbors in Census Track four, six, oh, one, Susanna Dad and James Griffith, who back in two thousand and three built an amphitheater in their backyard to enable the community to come together and to hear local musicians. Um, and they do this free of charge during the summertime as a means of exposing our community to the musicians who live in the community, as well as local musicians in this, uh, San Gabriel Valley area. Um, and they weren't able to be here this evening, but I wanted to read you a brief note that I received from them. "We feel that it's an honor to have this piece of land that allowed us to build a place where people can come together to hear local musicians. Altadena has so many talented musicians who can't always find a venue to share their work. James and I are very pleased that more and more neighbors are coming to the Folly Bowl, meeting each other, and enjoying time in the garden to hear the diverse ensembles that play here. All the best and happy holidays from Sue and James." We have decided to, um, they'll be receiving a certificate honoring their work, um, and, um, Councilmember Knapp and I have also, um, uh, gotten a gift certificate for them from the Amara Kitchen, um, here in Altadena, um, as a small token of our appreciation for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm gonna move on to, um, I just wanna make a quick note, because this is my last, I, I won't be, uh, chair shortly after this, um, but if somebody could take notes during this, and then all the names that we have, if each council member that does the presentation passes along to the new corresponding secretary, and then we can post our community champions on our website, and then we can also share it with each other so that they get the recognition beyond who's watching this, uh, thi- this particular meeting. So I, I, I would find that I'd really appreciate that, and I will be happy to help. But again, I won't be chair after this, so I just wanna get that in. Okay, so, uh, moving on, I'm gonna move on to my census tract, forty-six, oh, two, and I'm gonna hand this over to Nick Anzen.
All right, Chris, I fully expect music to play me out when I hit my two minutes. Okay. Um, look, uh, Lauren Checanello is a seventeen-year-old here in Altadena that we're gonna be sadly losing as a citizen of Altadena next fall, because she'll be going off to college. But, um, we wanted to recognize what she did during the pandemic, and it might sound simple on the surface, but Lauren teaches hip-hop line dancing, and she was offering this outside during the pandemic and continues to. And like I said, while that might sound simple, during a time of death, of anxiety, of people longing to be with their community, Lauren provided an opportunity for free continuously. And with all of the other things she's doing, and trust me, I have a huge resume of accomplishments for this girl. She actually, um, gave up her time and her passion and her energy. And I just think it's incredible when our, our younger citizens find that. So I just wanna quick play what, um, me giving her certificate to her. Let me make sure, is that centered for everybody? All right, so this was last Saturday. Good morning. We, the members of the Altadena Town Council, wish to recognize you for your commitment to be of service to our community. We also recognize you for the civic pride you demonstrated through your dedication to be a vital resource to our community. We are grateful for the contribution of your talent and proudly bestow on you the title of Altadena Track Forty-Six-O-Two Community Partner of the Year for twenty-twenty-one. So, um, while she might not necessarily agree with Community Partner of the Year, the best thing about Lauren is that she will tell you, and as we all know, our community is packed with Partners of the Year. So I might have been calling her that, but she, um, she definitely shares this. And Lauren, thanks for being here. Give a wave there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, and, and, and thank you, uh, thank you, Nick. I'm gonna move on, uh, to, uh, Census Track Forty-Six-O-Three Point Oh One.
Okay, uh, we, we have two, but we're, keep it to two minutes. So I am pleased to present as one of our people to emphasize this year as a community partner in CT Four-Six-O-Three-O-One, Clayton Davis, young person, uh, thirty-two years old, not as young as seventeen, but younger than the rest of us. My friend and my fellow Altadena Eagle, both of us active members of the Fraternal Order of Eagles and Women's Auxiliary Chapter, respectively. Clayton grew up in Altadena at the house his whole family still lives in at Thurin and Marigold. Throughout his life, he, along with his mother and siblings, cared for his severely disabled father. He went to Mira High School and graduated in two thousand and seven. While at Pasadena City College, he participated in the Tournament of Roses Marching Band, a very tall two-book player in both two thousand and eight and nine. Some of his volunteer work through the years includes working with the Washington Middle School Marching Band, helping them stay in formation, and supported him at the Black History Parade in Altadena, sorry, in Pasadena. Dorothy and I wanted to highlight a young person who grew up in our community and was able to get the education he needed to develop his career and work hard toward it. After he graduated from college, he eventually worked as a teacher for the P U S D, teaching fourth and fifth grade math at Avison School, also in our census tract. Of his own initiative, he started to take online classes. When his vocational call moved from teaching to information technologies, he took classes at Lictauho Community College in I T, and this past year landed his dream job, providing tech support for the LA Unified School District. So as LA County's largest unincorporated area, we commend that Clayton Davis was homegrown well here in the Dina, and that he is now offering his talents and expertise to LA County at large. Thank you, Clayton Davis, for your commitment to your path and the good example you set for all your cohorts in Altadena. Thank you, Dorothy.
Yes, thank you, and I'm gonna jump right in. Uh, my community champion, uh, is Esther Song. And Esther Song, can you guys see my screen?
Uh huh.
Uh, so Esther Song is my unsung hero. Moving to Altadena over the pandemic, her first year as a champion volunteer, uh, was hands down amazing. A champion for safer streets and access around Loma Alta Park, uh, supporting, uh, our community outreach, City Nature Challenge, uh, making maps and documenting people using the protected walkway. Uh, and then we set up a bicycle skills course, uh, engaging the community. Um, so Esther has been an amazing champion, serving, engaging the community, creating a survey, uh, that provided information that helps provide community input for safe routes to parks and trail connectivity. She is a tireless advocate for trails and is one of the board members of the Mount Wilson Bicycling Association. And there is Esther, nothing can stop her. Welcome to Altadena, Champion Esther Song.
Thank you.
Yeah, need to stop sharing the screen, stop share. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, uh, uh, Councilmember One. Moving on, item Forty-Six-O-Three Point Oh Two, and your community, uh, champion.
Uh, council members, thank you for the opportunity to present that. I'd like to wish you all and all the residents with us today a happy holiday season and a happy new year. Uh, Dr. Sandra Thomas and I are privileged to represent our census tracts here on the Altadena Town Council. Track Forty-Six-O-Three Point Oh Two is filled with incredible people living in beautiful houses and a small but growing number of local small businesses. All of our residents and our businesses deserve recognition and acclaim for making it through yet another difficult year. And we've been able to keep standing through this all because we stand together, because we have the good fortune to belong to this incredible community. But Dr. Thomas and I would like to take this opportunity to especially acknowledge and highlight one of the gems of our community and of our tract, Bob Lucas Memorial Branch of the Altadena Library District. While often overshadowed by its larger and more illustrious sibling in Forty-Six-Eleven, the Bob Lucas Branch provides an array of services to the residents of all of Altadena, but especially to those of us here on the West Side. In addition to providing an easily accessible location for library services, such as picking up and dropping off the newest booksellers, participating in the district's Library of Things program, practicing the internet, giving our local high schoolers a place to print out the latest draft of their English paper. Bob Lucas also runs a career online high school where working men and women can avail themselves of the opportunity to earn an accredited high school degree and a career certificate so that they might be more effectively competitive in the modern economy or lay the groundwork to further their educational goals. The branch also hosts a one-on-one literacy program and an English as a Second Language class free of charge to any resident here. Uh, and if you're interested in volunteering to tutor for either of those, you can sign up at, uh, altadenalibrary.org/literacy. Uh, lastly, the Bob Lucas Memorial Branch is attempting to do its part for Altadena to improve the ways in which we interact with the environment. In addition to the work they've done redesigning the outside areas with ecologically sound native plant species, the branch has also recently begun a community compost hub where residents who may not have the individual need to compost can participate in a neighborhood-wide effort to work towards a more holistic approach to interacting with our earth. Of course, the library doesn't run itself, so in addition to honoring the institution, Dr. Thomas and I would also like to express our deepest appreciation to branch manager Diana Wong and library director Nikki Winslow. Thank you both for all of the work you do in our.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, uh, Census Track Four, Six, Ten.
Okay. I'm gonna share my screen. Daryl's gonna present, and I'm going to... Go ahead, Daryl.
Hey, everybody. So this last, this last year, we were all notified of the work being put in by the members of the Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church in hosting the COVID testing site, and they've helped with over seventeen thousand tests being done. Uh, I know I myself, uh, took a test there a couple of times. Veronica and I felt that they deserved this recognition for being a community partner. Uh, we presented the, the, the award to Pastor Lawrence Dorsey II and to his membership on December eleventh. We have the short video here, uh, from their YouTube.
So, I'm gonna grab. Please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Happy Sabbath. My name is Daryl. I am with the Altadena Town Council.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here. I'm Veronica Jones, and I'm also with the Altadena Town Council.
So, as the Bible says, let each of you look not, not only to his own interests, but also, also to the interests of others.
You, you shall love your neighbor as yourself.
So Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church has lived by those words, and that is why we are here today. The Altadena Town Council recognizes your dedication to be of service to the Altadena community. We recognize your dedication, commitment, and valued contributions to serve your community.
In recognition of your leadership and guidance, we celebrate you, Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church, today. Your leadership and work has shown your commitment to caring about the health and welfare of the residents of the Altadena community, opening up your church to make sure there was a place for residents to be tested for COVID and to be, to receive the vaccine. Over seven thousand COVID tests were administered here at your church. You made a difference in this community, and we celebrate you.
On behalf of the Altadena Town Council, Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church and the Altadena community, we thank you and honor you on this day, the tenth day of December twenty-twenty-one, oh, the eleventh day of December, twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Nathan, Mr. Sinclair, and Mrs. Chatra Hill, especially, we thank you, thank you very much, and we want to present to you this plaque, which reads, "To Altadena Seventh Day Adventist Church, your community partner, thank you for your outstanding leadership and dedication to protecting the quality of life for the Altadena community and its, its state."
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, I just wanna make a correction. I said seven thousand.
If you don't mind, and you can, you can.
Yeah.
You're done.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It was a wonderful presentation, so it's good. Okay, moving on, forty, forty-six, eleven. I, I love these real moments. It's the best. It, it makes us human. As, as any actor will tell you, right, Nick, the, the real moments are the, the ones we treasure the most, so. Yeah.
I have too many real moments.
Item, uh, uh, Census Track Forty-Six-Eleven.
Yes. I, I, I will be speaking for Madeline and myself. Uh, we have chosen for a ch- community champion, a lady named Yvette Stewart Gordon. Now, what, there are a number of things that impressed me about her, but to begin with, it's her heart. It's just from walking down the street, walking up Lake Avenue, over by the, uh, Steve's Pet Store. Behind that pet store, it's like an alley, and there, there are a few homeless people that are frequently there overnight. And just from walking by and seeing that, her heart went out to them, and she came back with clothes. She came back with food. You know, I, it's, she saw a need and she addressed it. That's the one thing, is her heart. But really, what really made a larger impact was that she combined that, like, with what you could call mag- uh, uh, it's like, uh, she combined it with her other gifts, her other skills, and was able to magnify her impact on situations that her heart went out to. Uh, an example of that is when the, uh, when COVID hit, and then when they finally had a vaccine, she's an RN, by the way. She, uh, coordinated and organized, uh, a vaccine clinic event. She held the vaccine clinic event in LA County. Uh, she did one in twenty-twenty, she did one in twenty-twenty-one. She, eh, as a result of her efforts, more than a hundred, uh, LA County citizens were vaccinated. And, and the way I see it, that's clearly lives were saved. At the same time, over that same period, uh, the Red Cross had broadcast the need for more blood. So she organized two blood drives. And, and again, brought a lot of people in and got a lot of blood so that it would help to restore the, uh, local blood supply that we all need. Um, and so through that, she has been able to have the, the, her heart, the impact of her heart magnified with her gifts organizationally and medically. She was able to provide services to the community that were very beneficial. Uh, let's see, I wanna note too that when talking to her about, so what have you done? You know, and, and she's talking about the, the homeless people and all, she flipped it on me and said, "How can I get in touch with other people that are serving the homeless? Because I wanna know how I can do more in that area." Again, a reflection of her heart. Uh, let's see. Enough about what she's done, and she's done more than that. She's also affiliated with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. She's affiliated with the Order of the Eastern Star, Golden State Grand Chapter, uh, Prince Hall Rite of Adoption. Uh, she's president of the Thomas Jefferson High School Alumni Association. And she's a member of All Nations, uh, Church of God in Christ. And again, I, and so, in the last few moments we have, I'd like to present her to, to just, uh, she'd like to speak just for a quick moment. Here she is. Yvette Stewart Gordon.
Thank you, thank you, um, to the council. Um, I appreciate it. I take this, um, um, recognition with honor. You know, the words say, um, "Am I my brother's keeper?" And to whom much is given, much is expected, and the answer is yes, yes, and yes. So we need to just keep doing that. We see it. So, we need to just keep doing that. We see a need. We need to try to fill in the gap. And here, one thing I would like to see in Altadena is maybe, you know, some pamphlets, resource pamphlets for the homeless that we see, that we can give to them, perhaps maybe the Sheriff Department can have them with their deputies. Because I'm sure they frequent them often to share with them the different resources that LA County have now to help the homeless off the streets. So again, I wanna thank you, and I just enjoy what I do, and I will always try to help someone and to make this space better. So again, thank you so much for this honor. Thank you.
You are more than welcome, and actually, it's more of us thanking you. Thank you. God bless you, and continue with your good works. You're a blessing to the community.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move on to Census Track forty-six-twelve for the personal organization that your Census Track wishes to honor. Forty-six twelve.
So I believe, um, is, um, see on mute? It's going to be Jennifer Hall, but I, I believe that the write-up was done by... Hold on a second. Yeah, Doug had the write-up. Doug, are you there? I can improvise, of course. Jennifer has done so much.
He was here. I don't see him.
Yeah.
He was there.
Yeah, well, no.
PC just went down. He's rebooting.
Reggie, if it's okay, I wanna make sure that Jennifer gets recognized the correct way, so I'm gonna move on. Come back to this one, if that's okay.
Is he back? Okay, go for it then.
Is he back?
We'll get together. We'll get Jennifer. We'll get together.
Okay, what Doug's doing now, I'm just gonna move on to the next one so that Jennifer can get recognized as soon as Doug's back. So I'm gonna move on to forty-six thirteen.
Hi, this is Diane Marcusson, and Sylvia and I chose one of our residents who proves that one person can make a difference. A twenty-four-year, oh, and by the way, it's David Kristoff who is on with us tonight. A twenty-four-year resident of Altadena, David Kristoff, has contributed to the community for many years. Before retiring, he had a long career as a teacher and principal. Since his retirement, he has continued to find opportunities to teach and give back. He volunteers at Club Twenty-One Learning and Resource Center in Pasadena as, as a part of the Every Child a Reader Program, where he tutors a Down Syndrome child weekly. He volunteers for Altadena Congregation Together Serving Act for their Thanksgiving Interfaith Service, and is a twenty-twenty-two coordinator of the Pasadena Area Crop Hunger Walk, which is a fundraiser for local and global hunger outreach programs. In his spare time, David also has an important role as part of Eaton Canyon Nature Center Associates, ECNCA, where he serves on the board as the weekday tour chair for volunteer coordination. He leads family nature walks on every second Saturday of the month and works with the garden group on Wednesdays to maintain plants around the nature center. If you take advantage of the many programs that ECNCA and the county puts on, you may see him there at Eaton Canyon. Thank you, David, for all you do to support the environment, child education, and hunger outreach programs for Altadena.
You are very welcome, Diane Marcusson.
Very.
And I wanna thank Diane Marcusson, who's not only a great Altadena Town Council member, but also a wonderful neighbor, as well as Sylvia Vega. We're so happy to have them as our representatives on the council, because both of those women are just so approachable, and they're always willing to help out. So we're lucky to have them, and all of you, I appreciate the recognition and your kindness in recognizing all the great things I do. But most of the time, I'm just in Eaton Canyon looking at birds. So, if you ever wanna go on a bird walk, you come on down, because a lot of you don't get out of your office enough. And let me tell you, Eaton Canyon is a gem and a jewel that we have in Altadena.
Yeah.
You know, we have so many things here in the community for so many people, and it's always amazing how many of us residents, we don't know what's even available. Like the, as Diane mentioned, I've been involved with Acts, the Altadena Congregations Together Serving, which is, you know, been around for over forty years. And we still have people that don't realize that every Saturday at the, the Altadena Congregational Church up at the top of Lake at, at Altadena Drive, is giving food to anyone who comes through. So, you know, really, as members, I really encourage you to learn about these things so that you have a voice in helping so many people who come into our community that might help, that might need some help. So thank you all. Thank you for your commitment to the community and all the good you're doing here in Altadena.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Now, is, welcome back, Doug. I see you're connecting with audio. I'm gonna move on, and in the meantime, we do know who they're honoring, because it's Jennifer Lee Hall, so.
Yes.
We love, we love Jennifer, and I really hope that I get to work with you again soon in some capacity, because Jennifer is the best, and I've had many, many wonderful years working with her, so. I'm passing it over to Doug, Councilman Cauliflower. I think you're on mute, so. For Census Track forty-six-twelve.
Can Chris unmute? Can Chris unmute him?
Doug, can you hear us? You are on mute, so. And if you're still having issues, is it not allowing you to mute, to unmute?
Yeah, maybe he can't be unmuted, and I don't have the text that he wrote for Jennifer's. Let's see if he emailed it to me.
Probably email it to him now.
Yeah.
What if he could, Doug, can you hear me? Can you email the text? How much time do we have? What time is it? Eight oh six.
Let me just email it to you, Reggie.
Do you have it? Well, I'm just going to, I'm just going to improvise. Jennifer is with us now. I first, first met Jennifer when I, after the first time I ran, I'd heard that Jennifer was very much interested in, in schools and education. And after my first term was at two thousand and, Jennifer, what was the year I, my first term was up, Jennifer, you sent me an email saying, asking if I was going to run again.
Yeah, I don't remember when that was. It was a long time ago. I don't remember.
And I'm like, if I'm like, you're gonna be the person, you know, that's gonna be, that's gonna be my successor, and so I said, go for it. And the work she did with Elliot, and the energy and the passion she put into education here in Altadena was just phenomenal. I'm so impressed with her education, her dedication, her dedication to helping kids learn, our kids learn. And her commitment is just breathtaking to me. I mean, I dragged myself to the meeting, you know? Jennifer has so much energy, and she's just floored me with her dedication and principles. She knew the principles. She just worked so hard with them. And she always brings so much to the meetings, and I think she was on some subcommittees as well. And I'm like, man, she's such a great person to run in the dis- to represent the kids here. I know she has some, probably can tell us some history, what drives that passion for hers. I think part of it's the integration of schools. I think that's important to her. But as you know, she got elected to PSD as a supervisor, as a board member, which is not easy these days to be on the board. And as she said earlier, she can talk about it. She's loving it, you know? And so, what a gift, and it's great to have her back. I don't think, Jennifer, you've been to one of my astronomy nights here, though. You haven't seen through my telescope yet, have you?
No.
So I gotta get you over to, Brenda, yeah?
Jennifer sent me her statement that she sent to you. If you want me to read that.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot, Diane.
Sorry, she didn't have your cell phone number.
No problem. We'll make it work.
Okay, Jennifer says, "I'm focused on an upcoming Armenian language program at Webster Elementary, which will add to the other PUSD dual-language programs in Altadena. French at Altadena Arts and Spanish at Jackson STEM Magnet. In addition, I'm working on the Facilities Committee for PUSD, and I'm working to repurpose the closed Franklin Elementary School facility to benefit the Altadena community. I'm also focused on leading a public discussion on, by the board, on the best way forward to increase our student enrollment. Pandemic-related challenges, solutions, and successes. I'm proud to say that PUSD was among the first school districts in Southern California to offer vaccinations for teachers, staff, and students. We have a strong working relationship with the Pasadena Public Health Department. As a public school, the issue of vaccine mandates provided tough challenges, and every child is entitled to a free in-person education. As we watch other school districts who adopted mandates have to extend deadlines due to large numbers of unvaccinated students, I'm happy to say that PUSD, through regular testing and a mask requirement, has avoided these complications. We're actively working on our detailed plan, which is focused on encouraging vaccinations to reach a hundred percent vaccination rate in anticipation of Governor Newsom's vaccine mandate for the state. When my daughter was enrolled at Elliott Arts, I co-created the early, the yearly, sorry, yearly Women's History Month Assembly. This year, I organized a PUSD event for three principals to speak at the Armenian Center here in Altadena. It was a chance for community members to ask questions about Webster Elementary, Elliott, and Altadena Arts and Marshall Fundamental. I enjoyed organizing a formal event to make a connection between the PUSD and the Tekian Cultural Association. I intend to continue to find ways to promote our Altadena schools with support from the leadership of the district. Thank you, Jennifer, because you're the first representative on PUSD who has just absolutely gone out of their way to get Altadena seen and heard. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Excellent job, Jennifer. And my kids are both school students, and she's made it, she's really made a huge improvement, I think, in PSD schools. Go, Jennifer.
Oh, Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you, Jennifer, and like everyone, most people in this room and everyone else is, I consider Jennifer a good friend and many of the council members, so I hold, I hold all the friendships dear, so. Thank you for what you do, Jennifer, and I'm sorry, I couldn't find your email to, quick enough to, to, to jump in and read, so. Thank you, Councilman Marcusson, for doing that.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the next item. So just before I do that, I just wanna make sure, as I mentioned, we, I would like to see, if possible, whoever the corresponding secretary is gonna be, to make sure that we make a list of our community heroes and partners that we've just read out and post them on our website, and then share wherever we can. This is all in lieu of a community celebration that we usually do during the holiday season. So if, corresponding secretary and the new executive committee, if, it's my, my ask of you to make sure that happens, so. Thank you.
Reggie, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes. And we can, and we can see the bridge, too.
I am sorry, everybody. Reggie, thank you very much. Diane, thank you. That was bizarre, but I apologize, but thank you for pitching, and.
Mm-hmm. We can move on.
You just got stage fright and wasn't ready to do it. I know.
No, not Doug. He just got stage fright.
No, no.
Okay, moving on to item six, the election of the new officers. Item six point one. Now, hopefully Doug can speak. I'm gonna hold him over to the Slate Committee Report for the Chair of the Slate Committee, which is Doug Cauliflower.
Okay, thank you. So let me, I just wanted to give everybody kind of an overview of how the committee approached it and kind of the steps we took. I was asked by Billy, I believe, on November twenty-third to chair the Slate Committee, which I agreed to do so. We assembled, I assembled the slate, including myself, Amy Lyford, Madeline Barber, and Sylvia Vega. And we held our first meeting on the thirtieth of November. Being that there's no written protocols in our bylaws for exactly how this process goes, we met and we discussed some options and some ideas and came up with some, some steps that we felt were fair and transparent, unbiased. And then basically agreed to the contents in an email that we sent to all the eligible council members, which was basically everybody here except us that were on the committee. The email invited everybody to consider a position on the Executive Committee. We followed up. I referenced the five positions, Chair, Vice Chair, Treasurer, Recording Secretary, and Corresponding Secretary, and also provided a link to our bylaws should anybody have questions or wanting further clarification. We decided that to be consistent in looking at candidates' interests and qualifications. Then we came up, we asked everybody that was interested to answer two questions in one page, maximum one page. The first one was basically asking them to describe their interest in serving on the Executive Committee and include the position or positions they'd be wished to serve in and why they feel they're a good candidate for that particular position or positions. Secondly, the second one, to explain their perspective on how the Executive Council ought to interact with the rest of the council with specific references to leadership and collaboration with council in setting annual and monthly agendas for the ATC. We went on to mark the important dates or the timetable that would transpire. The email that I referenced went out on December two. And then with the due date for any submissions, we're due on December tenth at three, Friday at three PM. About halfway through that, I decided that I, to be safe and sorry, I made phone calls to each and every town, every council member just to, number one, confirm that they'd received the email, and secondly, asked if they had any questions. And I was able to contact everybody but two council members, and I followed up with voicemail and email and did not connect with, with two of the, two of the group here. Both of those members I corresponded with, both email and voicemail in the past, so I was reasonably comfortable that the message had been received. The submissions came in on the tenth of December. The committee reconvened on December fourteenth. We reviewed all the submissions and basically had a good, honest conversation and selected a slate, which I will present in just a moment. And the only other comment I wanted to make, or just everybody to know, there was only one position that had multiple parties that were interested in it, and that was Vice Chair. The other positions had one person that was interested in, and so it wasn't as complicated as you may think, so. With that, I think everybody got the slate via email, but I will reread it just to confirm. But the slate that we are recommending or proposing is Chair is Veronica Jones, Vice Chair is Victoria Knapp, Treasurer is Chris O'Malley, Corresponding Secretary Dorothy Wong, and Recording Secretary Nick Arnsen.
Okay, that's the slate as read. As Chair, I will pass it over to the full council to see if there are any, if anybody else, just, but that is a slate as read. But if anybody would like to contest or actually apply for a seat or would like to nominate somebody other than the Slate Committee, the Slate Committee's done a wonderful job on, on looking and evaluating credentials and experience. But again, it is a democracy and it's an open floor, so if anybody would like to nominate somebody or themselves for any one of those positions outside of the slate, then that position will go to a full vote in front of the council. then that position will go to a full vote in front of the council. Other than that, all the rest of the positions that will not have a contestant will go for a full, will just be accepted as is. So is there anyone on the floor that would like to nominate someone or themselves? I see no one, so therefore the slate does not need to be, does not need a vote, because there's nothing being contested, and I accept the slate as presented. So we now have a new Executive Committee as read. In saying that, I will go into Item 6.2, which is the installation of the new Executive Committee, and I will hand this over to the new Chair, Council Chair Veronica Jones. Who will be leading the rest of the meeting.
If I lead the way I did that presentation, we're in trouble.
At least you stayed on the air. I just checked out altogether.
I wish I was getting off. You've seen that commercial. You want to get away? I wanted to get away. Yeah, but okay, we're going to move on to, first of all, I just want to welcome the Executive Committee. I'm looking forward to working with everybody. I think the town council, we have a great team, and it's going to take all of us to move forward in 2022. So I welcome all the help and suggestions I can get. So, thank you. And now we're going to move on to the committee reports, and that's the election report with Chris O'Malley. And we're timing you, Chris.
Chris, you're muted.
There it is. I got it. I got it. I'm good. Let me figure it out. Sorry, give me a second. I'm not the worst at this. That's all that counts. All right. Good evening. Happy holidays. First off, Billy, I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done sharing the council in these unusual times. I'm sure I'm not alone when I say that you've done a wonderful job. And should you decide not to run in the special election, you will be sorely missed. I would also, once again, like to thank all of the Altadena residents that ran in the 2021 election. Even if you lost your race, your participation makes our town a more vibrant and active place. And should you wish, there are numerous other opportunities to contribute to our community, including, but not limited to, committees of the council such as Safe Streets and Communication, the Rotary Club, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Bob Lucas Literacy Program. You could be a tutor. They do that there. We do have one last piece of business to wrap up, and that is the special election for Census Track 4602. The council is now accepting applications for the empty seat. If you're interested in running, the eligibility requirements are as follows. You must be at least eighteen years of age, a citizen and a registered voter, a permanent resident of Altadena for two years prior to assuming office, and you must permanently reside within Census Track 4602. To apply, please deliver a completed 2021 election application, a one-page statement of qualifications, a copy of proof of identification showing Altadena residency, and a $35 check or money order to Chairperson Veronica Jones, care of the community center at 730 East Altadena Drive by January 11th, 2022. The community center is closed for the rest of the year, but it will reopen on January 3rd, and hours of operation are from eight in the morning until five at night. If you need more information, you can find it on our website. Go to the candidate packet that is this right here. That will lead you right here, and you can look at the election application there. A special election works a little differently than a general election does. To begin with, candidates are elected by a majority of the council, not by the Altadena population. That means that there is no general campaigning. Candidates will be invited to make a statement to the Altadena Town Council at our January 18th meeting. For more information, please refer to Article 12, Section E of the bylaws, which can be found here. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to email me at chris.malley@altadinatowncouncil.org. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I forgot I'm in charge. I forgot that quick. I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to move on to Item Nine. And Dorothy, was there any general public comment?
No, Madam Chair, we have not.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to our happy holidays. I hope you guys enjoy this, and I hope I can get it up and going. And it was fun to do. Okay, I want to thank everybody and wish everybody safe and happy holidays. We're going to move to adjourn, and we're just going to take a moment to pause for Dolores Hickambottom. And then we will be adjourned until next year.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to, before we adjourn, could we add, since we're speaking of Dolores, and we're in the same, she was a Tuskegee Airman, and that's very important. I just wanted to add that.
Yes, we honored her at one of our meetings as an Airman. Yes.
Wow.
It was amazing.
She's amazing, I want to know.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, I just wanted to say to outgoing Chair Malone that on behalf of the Altadena Town Council and the citizens of Altadena, we appreciate your service to our community for, in their role as Chair of this council and for your longstanding service in your Census Track. And a certificate of recognition will be coming to you from all of us. Personally, I just want to thank you. It was your friendship that recruited me onto the town council initially, and we've remained very good colleagues, coworkers, and friends since. And I know that the rest of the colleagues on the council share my deep gratitude to you for all that you've done for this community. So thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, may we also get him the president, the leader's plaque, the one we always get with the.
I have a plaque.
With the handle, with the hammer, whatever it is. Not to hit him with it, with a gavel. We're not going to fight.
Yeah.
But the one, you know, the one, speaking of, if somebody could take, consider that.
And hopefully he will run and still be here with us.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate that. It does mean an awful lot, all the sentiments you give. Thank you.
Would you like to motion to adjourn?
May I motion to adjourn?
Second.
Chair Jones, would you like to put that to a vote? You have a second.
Okay, can we put that to a vote?
All in favor of adjourning with happy holidays?
Happy holidays.
We adjourn, and thank you, you guys. I'm sorry, I'm technology challenged, and I have a whole lot of other challenges, so.
You were fine. It was fine. It was fine.